Christie, the clock is crooked. It's slanted.
What's crooked?
Everybody's ready on deck? Ready? Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the zoning board of appeals and plan, I'm sorry, the planning and zoning commission of the village of Bartlett, counties of Cook, DuPage, and Kane. Please call the roll.
Bob Picaro.
Here.
Charlie DeVoe.
Here.
Mark Hopkins.
Here.
Julie Capitacakis. George Coziel.
Here.
John Miaso. Michelle Sarwaz.
Here.
John Baderman.
Here.
Mike Wearden.
Here.
We have John Baderman joining us, our newest member tonight to my far right. Please get a chance to meet him if you haven't already.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the December 8th, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by George.
Second.
Seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Charlie DeVoe.
Yes.
Mark Hopkins.
Epstein.
George Coziel.
Yes.
Michelle Sarwaz.
Yes.
Bob Picaro.
Yes.
John Baderman.
Epstein.
Mike Wearden.
Yes. Next item is the public forum. If there's anybody in the audience that has anything to be addressed that is not on the agenda, it could be any topic at all. Okay? None? At this point, we go to case number 23-03, Aldi, the northwest corner of East Devon and South Bertow Avenue in the streets of Bartlett. Are the petitioners present? Please, if you're going to speak, please come up to the mic now so that I can swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth? Okay? When we get to the public portion of the meeting, there are witness forms on the back table there. If you would fill them out and give them to Kim, then we don't have to swear you in. Okay, go ahead and present your case. Christie's going to, okay. We have the three exhibits that we need, the proof of mailing, the newspaper, and the pictures of the sign. Mark those exhibits A, B, and C. Can I take it nobody mailed anything into you or emailed anything to you for an exhibit?
Staff has not received anything, any written comments, or any phone calls on this project.
Okay.
I'm going to give a brief history of the site. We turn it over to the petitioners for their application.
Okay.
This property has been zoned B3 zoning district since 1978. The original construction started with a grocery store back in 1978. An additional building was built to the north in 1981. In 1988, the first PUD plan called for two additional buildings on the site, one at the southwest corner of the site and one at the northeast corner of the site. In 2006, the first PUD plan amendment expanded or created a play, outside play area for Montessori school in the location of the area that was proposed for one of the outlots. A few years later, they expanded the play area, which was the second site slash PUD plan amendment for what was at that time Bartlett Plaza. In 2019, the third site plan and PUD amendment was approved in which the new owner of the shopping center anticipated building a building pad somewhere in the area that is highlighted in the red section. The petitioners are before us today for a fourth site plan, PUD amendment, to move an Aldi grocery store at the southwest corner of the site. This is a modification to the planned unit development special use. The petitioner has entered into a ground lease with the property owner. The petitioner is also requesting a final site slash PUD plan for the 20,000 square foot Aldi grocery store. Aldi would be allowed to sell liquor as part of the existing special use that was granted in 2019. The site slash PUD plan also calls for a potential 2,500 square foot addition on the west side of the building. The downtown overlay district reduces the parking requirement when parking is shared by different uses. Staff has calculated the parking requirement based on the current tenants within the building as well, within the entire center as well as with Aldi's needs. It was determined that the maximum required parking for all of the uses is 390 spaces. With the proposed Aldi addition, they are proposing to have 444 parking spaces. With that previous PUD plan that had been approved, there was actually a variation that would have allowed them to go down to 406 parking spaces at the center. Aldi is requiring bicycle racks for the required four bicycle parking spaces that are required near their entrance at the southeast corner of the building. The building elevations are comprised of spec brick, concrete masonry, as well as incorporate nichihau fiber cement panels. These were the elevations that were presented to the committee of the hall based on feedback from the committee asking for additional upgrades to the rear elevation, which would be the north side of the building. The petitioner has added the panels to that side as well. In addition to some of the petitioners requesting six major design exceptions to the building facade and some of the building requirements from the downtown overlay zoning district, I'll let the petitioner get into details on all of that. Let's see. The petitioner has agreed to use parking lot lights that are similar to the downtown light fixtures that will tie this development in with the surrounding streets of Bartlett parking lot. The original landscape plan that was presented to the committee of the hall included some shrubs and ornamental grasses along the loading area on the north side of the building. Based on feedback from the committee, the petitioners have added a berm with three evergreen trees and additional shrubs and ornamental plantings to further screen the loading dock area from the businesses to the north. The petitioner is present and can answer questions. Staff does recommend approval of the petitioner's request, subject to the conditions and findings of fact in the staff report. With that, I'll leave it up to the petitioner for their presentation.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Nicole Cammerer, 975 East 22nd Street, Wheaton, Illinois, 60189.
Okay, go ahead.
Hold on a second. I have to, I'm having difficulties with having two PowerPoint slides open at the same time.
Aldi is working together with our office, RWG Engineering and APD Architects out of New York on this project. Here's an existing aerial of the site showing, you know, where that green area, the grass area is primarily where the proposed Aldi will be going in. Here's the proposed site plan, the layout of the building, and the parking area maintains the existing driveways, maintains the grass area and the landscaped area on the south side along Devon, and maintains good site distance for the stop sign at that west entrance for people leaving the site. Here's the proposed floor plan. The renderings, as Christie mentioned, you know, Aldi added on the back wall there by the truck dock, some additional features to make it, you know, more decorative and more appealing. Variation requests for architectural design guidelines, south elevation facing Devon Avenue, major design exceptions, building regulations, minimum, I can't read that, minimum required transparency per ground story on primary footage, frontage 65% required, 13.8% provided, is measured between two and eight feet, minimum building entrances on primary frontage, two required, zero provided. The main frontage on Devon is not, you know, facing the parking lot, the entrance to the store is facing the parking lot. It's also on the south end near the pedestrian access if pedestrians were to come from Devon up to the store. The building facade design, simplicity of surface materials on primary frontage facades, minimum 60% of a facade, should be a single material required, 34.7 fiber cement panel, 35.9% masonry provided, minor facade materials, Table C prohibited materials, ACP is listed as prohibited material, aluminum composite panels are utilized on the tower. And then the last one is changes in surface materials, materials should not change unless change in depth of eight inches or more required, three inch change depth provided. All of these variations being requested comply with the Aldi national standards. For the north elevation, the major design exceptions is building facade design, changes in surface materials, materials should not change unless changed in depth of eight inches or more required, three inch change depth provided. East elevations, major design exceptions, building regulations, minimum required transparency per ground story on primary frontage, 65% required, 42.7% provided, is measured between two and eight feet, maximum tower width, maximum tower width is 30 feet, 77 feet, five inches provided, building facade design, simplicity of surface materials on primary frontage facades, minimum 60% of a facade should be a single material required, 13.3% fiber cement panel, 37.7% masonry provided, minor facade materials, Table C prohibited materials, ACP is listed as a prohibited material, and aluminum composite panels are utilized on the tower. Changes in surface materials, materials shall not change unless change in depth of eight inches or more required, three inch change depth provided. Not on the west elevation. On the proposed grading plan here, we maintain all existing drainage patterns out on the site today. Berm is provided on the north side of the loading dock. There's also a berm in the landscaped area on the north side of the entrance into the Aldi parking lot. Out there today, there is existing detention in the parking lot that is for the entire east half of that parking lot for the whole shopping center. With this, the existing conditions, there's over a foot of ponding that can happen in the parking lot. That's how it was designed for the detention. The proposed plan fills in some of that detention on the surface level to reduce the ponding depth to about seven inches at a maximum, and that storage is then replaced underground in 48-inch pipes to reduce the amount of surface storage in this area and move it to underground. With that, there are no negative impacts to the rest of the parking lot with detention storage that's existing. The west half of the parking lot does not have detention provided in it. There's storm sewer that runs north-south but no restrictor, so that, you know, factored in when we placed the building where it is today, or where it is proposed today. The proposed landscape plan is in conformance with the requirements for the village. As Christie mentioned, landscaping was added on the north side of the truck deck as requested, and it's, the proposed landscaping is generally low maintenance and drought tolerant plants. And then here's the proposed amended PUD plan again. Some operational data for Aldi, the store is open Monday through Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. For truck traffic, one Aldi truck per day on average for deliveries. Deliveries are typically either overnight or in the early hours before the store opens. The number of truck deliveries, you know, daily determined by the store's volume, and about nine times per week on average, there will be other trucks such as dairy, Coke, Pepsi, beer, wine. One to two times per week for garbage disposal depending on store volume. The stores generally have 15 to 18 employees with five to eight working per shift. I guess that's the end of the presentation.
Could, could you point out that that tower exception moving to 77 feet? I realize that's semantics here, but specifically?
So with that angled.
The angled roof.
Line, that's considered.
Okay. It's considered the tower because of the elevation. Any further questions? Go ahead.
Ms. Cammer, could you point out on the elevations where, I can't tell the difference between where's the brick and where, just because of the, my eyesight, I guess. What's brick? What's nichihau? What's?
Chris will take the I.
Got ACM on the tower, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chris Stare, Aldi Foods, 1200 North Kirk Road, Batavia. The materials are, so this is, this is basically the spec, spec brick, the veneer here. This is that, like the lighter brown, that is the nichihau, the fiber cement panel. And then, yes, the metal here is omega panel, so it's basically aluminum composite panel in that location. That's just the spec brick there.
What did you just call it?
Well, it's like a.
Speak up, please. Spec brick?
Yeah, it's basically a, we call it spec brick, that's what we label it, a spec brick. It's like, kind of like a veneer, it's like four inches wide by eight inches high, so.
By what depths?
Sorry?
By what depths? Is it full, is it full depth?
No, it's not full.
So it's thin brick?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And then same thing on this, on this elevation, again, this, this here is the nichihau, the fiber cement panel, and then this again is the spec brick on here as well.
And are those actual windows there or just?
Yes, that is, those are windows that, for the employee break room.
Okay.
We're looking at a metal rail there at the depressed dock?
Yes, with a berm.
That's behind the landscaping that was described.
That's correct. Yeah, and then the dumpster sits down in the recessed dock, so it's, it's hidden by that side of the, or the north side of the dock, and then also there'll be a gate in front of it as well to conceal it, so when people drive by, you can't see it.
How much below ground level is it?
Four or four and a half feet, somewhere around there. Yep.
We have more.
Keep going.
All the rooftop equipment fully screened horizontally?
Yeah, so you can see these here, that's all the screening that will go around the rooftop equipment. It's made up of a composite panel that basically it just comes, it's something that's provided with RTU units themselves and will match the color scheme of what's going on at the, at their location.
Right. Are you planning on, well, let's keep on materials then. What does the tower look like from the west across the top of the roof when we look at it?
From the west?
Yeah.
This one? So if you're looking, if you're at the west looking east or looking east?
So, and we'll see that driving up and down Devon. What's that material there that?
The, that is the omega panel, the.
No, no, the other, the stuff to the left.
That is part of the roofing membrane material that is, that is colored as well.
Okay, all right. That's going to be very apparent coming down Devon, right? You spent a lot of money on a good feature on the building, but then you're going to see where we said, okay, we're done, right? And we've got shirt front architecture, and then we've got, I know we're not the architecture review committee here, but we are faced with these variations, so that comment is made. You know, I would say that because of the visibility of it, that those good materials should be carried back over the top of the roof until you can't see them anymore, so that it's complimentary to the east view of the building as well. Are you going to ask for outdoor sales?
Outdoor sales? No.
Are you going to get, okay, no, no outdoor sales? And then one comment about engineering, I'm really surprised, and that in this day and age that we're going to proceed forward with detention in the parking lot?
It's not ideal, but there's absolutely no way around it because we're on the south end of the drainage area, so everything drains from the north side of the parking lot south. And in order to eliminate, and also from the, from the east side, it drains onto this area of the parking lot. So for us to raise the parking lot to eliminate surface detention, we'd have to raise it up above adjacent areas that drain onto us. So there's no way to completely eliminate it. Also, you could put in underground storage, but then that, what, all that will happen will be the upstream area will just drain faster down into our underground detention, and then it'll just fill up. It won't back up where it's supposed to.
Are we dealing with the increased impervious area that we're adding to the site?
There is actually very minimal increased impervious area.
So on that green space, Nicole?
Well, that green space, but we're adding a lot of island space that, and, and I don't have it, well, yeah, I don't have the, do I have the site plan on here? I don't have the number in front of me with what the increase is.
I guess the long and the short of it is.
The increased, the increased impervious area, the net increase is less than the 2,500 square feet that would be required to provide volume control.
Okay.
So.
You're going to get a permit? This complies with?
It complies, yes, yes. It definitely complies with all the stormwater. There's also.
Surprised and disappointed, right, that we would continue with something that we eliminated from the 70s and 80s?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's not ideal, and that's why we minimized it as much as we could, but we can't negatively impact the rest of the parking lot. You know, unless you're going to go put in underground storage from the north-south, there's no way to do it without blocking that, I mean, we can't change the, you know, the whole parking lot.
I think CVS has underground storage, but that's just that parking lot area, correct?
Correct. Correct. That's a separate lot. It's not part of the sub.
Right, right.
There's also no history on how this was designed or, or, you know, built, what the intent was with the detention out there. And, you know, after talking with Bob Allen, grading wise and looking at the utilities out there, you know, the storm sewer and the grading, it appears that it could pond up to over a foot. I think it was about 14 inches to the high water level that we came up with, just based on grading. That's a lot of water, and Bob Allen said he's never once seen it anywhere close to that much, so we don't believe that it actually ever ponds up that high, but we, all we have to go off of is, you know, the field conditions. So we don't know in reality how, you know, how much flow is actually going into it and how it was designed, but, you know, all we had to go off of was that. And so at the very least, this is improving the conditions, at least on the south end of the site, and it's not negatively impacting any of the adjacent parking lot.
Thanks. Okay. I have a question about the, it would be the west wall facing CVS. That's all the same material from front to back.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
Is there any reason why we can't do something to add to that wall to make it more pleasant to look at? I'm going to get real specific and say, look at CVS, the neighboring building to this. They've got windows around all sides. Is there any possibility of putting in some windows?
There will be shelving all along that wall for, you know, for product, so I don't believe you could put windows on that wall.
Or a spandrel design or something where if you look along Main Street here where some things are, it breaks it up and gives it more curb appeal.
Yeah, what concerns me is that, to me anyway, in my opinion, this looks like a warehouse wall, and the streets of Bartlett, back in the day when the Todd was, was, was being put together, I was, I sat on it, and we looked at this area, and we had a lot of dreams and wishes. Nothing was specific, but we had a lot of ideas, and we, we were looking for something that's a little friendlier to look at. This, this reminds me of a, of an alleyway. I, I just don't, I don't like this massive wall that's, it does nothing for the, for the appeal.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, and I've noted that, and that's something we'll take back to committee. The challenge is going to be that, again, that side of the building, because there's already another building there, it's really not, you don't really see it unless you're driving right in and out, and with the, this being obviously the, our latest and greatest prototype, and just, it's, I mean, it's, it's going to be difficult to get it approved, but I will definitely take it back to the committee. Let's talk to them.
I think that would be nice because most traffic probably is going to be going past it, either coming in from Main Street or from Devon Avenue, they kind of converge there right in front of Past Mia, whether they're going to Aldi or the post office or anything else. I mean, pretty much traffic coming from the east farther down Devon would be using that first entrance.
Yeah, it's, it's a very apparent wall. And unfortunately, you've got a four-sided position here, and this is kind of treated like the back of a retail center. As was just stated, when we have this four-sided building, I would expect to have a lot of face type material on all four sides to make it visually appealing. a lot of face type material on all four sides to make it visually appealing. You know, curb appeal, that's not curb appeal.
One thing going, but if you look at that entire tract of land from Railroad Avenue on the north down to Devon Avenue, then from Main Street over to Berto, everything built in this century has more of that curb appeal on all four sides. And you are in a very prominent position, just like C V S. And people going by there, I, I think it would enhance it for you as well as anyone else going into the shopping center for other purposes. It would be more of a welcome note instead of a warehouse look along that drive. Unfortunately, our ordinance does not address that because that's not a street, a dedicated right-of-way. But it is a major entrance.
Like I said, I, I've noted that and I will take that back to committee.
Okay.
Maybe hire a graphic artist. Hire a graphic artist, some sort of artist to do something on it so it's not just bland, rather than try and recreate a whole new wall. So I have a question though. After walking around that site today, why is the trash area facing Pastamia? I would think that the area on the south side on Devon, where the trees are, would have been a much more logical place to have your trash, your entrance for loading and unloading. It's very confusing to me.
No, every, every store we have with the trash is always in the recessed loading dock.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm saying is that part of your building faces a restaurant. And I don't think it's fair or nice to that restaurant that that's where you're loading, unloading, even though maybe just once a day or however many times a day trucks come in and out. Yeah, I know that recessed and that's fine, but it just, it doesn't make sense, I guess is what I'm saying, when there was a whole nother driveway area on the south side that it could have been set up over there. That's.
Noted.
Okay.
Is part of that maybe an access issue because there's?
We looked at placing the building in a lot of different orientations and locations within this outlet. When we looked at putting the loading deck on the south side of the building, the truck movements, just, it didn't really work out to, to get trucks in and out of there while maintaining traffic flow and, and parking aisles and, and all of that. And also, you know, the requirements with, you know, spacing and setbacks and everything. So we did look at putting the loading deck on the, the west side, we looked at putting it on the south side, we looked at putting the building on the east side of the lot, you know, like we, we did rotate it all and, and this is, you know, the best way we could come up with to get the, you know, the traffic flow that, that would serve it best.
Yeah, I think what, and I think what you're asking though is the, does the, the-
The trash.
The trash area, like be down in this area?
I mean, the trash is-
Which isn't, oh, shoot, sorry.
And take it out of the loading dock?
Well, and the thing is, I, it wouldn't, you wouldn't want to put it on this side of the building facing Devon. I don't think that would be ideals from, but also I'm not sure how the, the trash delivery would pick it up right here in this corner.
Would be a tight squeeze, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, and plus they might be blocking this access point. And then also on top of that, we would be forcing our employees to have to come out the front door and walk, walk it all the way back, or they could just go right out the back room door and dump it right in the trash as well, so.
Yeah, I don't see a big deal with the trash myself. If it's once or twice a week and the dumpster itself isn't going to be visible. I mean, if, if, if it was a much higher frequency of removing that trash, I would be more concerned, but at once or twice a week, being located where it is, I think it's better there than someplace, you know, more visible.
On the Pastamia side, I'm concerned that apparently the parking, the, the, the street opposite from Pastamia, all those spaces are now gone, that they're not there. So that roadway, the, the, the in and out roadway right outside of Pastamia, today there's parking on the east, east side of the road. So there's parking between Pastamia and the grass area. Looks like that's gone.
That was, that was, we were directed, you know, in meeting with staff, you know, that it was not ideal to have parking right off the drive aisle like that for traffic flow, so. I mean, that was part of our discussion that, you know, with cars going in and out and then if we maintained any parking spaces in there.
Isn't that where some of the landscaping is going?
Yeah, that's where the landscaping is now.
Chris, what would present, prevent you from putting a little bit of landscaping or something on that west wall?
There is, there is some landscaping over there.
Not much. That's the, yeah.
So, yeah, there is some landscaping over on that side. Yeah.
What is it?
We just got. Yeah, what kind of trees are those? Two A F.
Green.
Autumn blaze maples.
I'm not sure what that, I can't read that.
They're autumn blaze maples and then there's some sort of little foundation plantings there.
Yeah.
So I think we're here in a general concern with the west view of the building. And, you know, we're sure not here to design anything for you, but the north elevation is set up with alternating panels and materials, Chris. And, you know, and you've got already thin brick on that west wall. If you come up with some sort of similar treatment to the west wall that you have on the north wall, you're going to be breaking it into pieces, right? And treating it a little bit more like the rest of the building is treated. I'm not, that, we're not here to suggest a solution. We're not trying to build cost into your project either, right? But I think it deserves that attention and, and as does the west side of the tower because it is going to be viewed not only from Devon, but from, you know.
Would give more of a welcoming view.
Yeah.
So I, honestly, I'd like to add a condition of approval if, for those two things, for the west wall and the west side of the tower when the time comes around.
Okay. Any other questions before we open it up to the public?
I got a few.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll start by thanking you guys. It's a beautiful building, so I'm excited for it. Just a quick question on that drainage. There's, is there a curb on the north side? Because the parking lot right now is, we can drive through the lanes, but it looks like you're installing a curb?
No.
Okay.
And the very north end of the-
That, that thick line?
No, that's, there's going to be some striping in there, just a little bit of striping to, you know, between the two rows of parking at the, the existing striping and, and the proposed stalls, just to keep everything parallel, but no curb.
Thank you. Pedestrian routes, there's not a lot of sidewalks within the property. We've got the Devon sidewalk, of course, but-
Yeah.
What kind of pedestrian routes are we looking at here? Just thinking about the bowling alley and the other properties, there will be some movement in the area. Is there going to be other routes or lines within the parking lot at least to designate pedestrian routes?
Like a designated walkway, you mean?
Like pedestrian routes from the other, the shopping center down?
From around the street spirelet?
No.
Okay.
There, yeah.
Can you tell me the distance from Pastamia to that outcropping of the building? That would be the northwest corner. There's the park to the west of the parking, of the loading dock. Obviously, I guess that's where product comes in and gets distributed from there, but what's the distance from that wall?
Back up two.
There, there it is. From?
Yeah, I don't have that.
That little outcropping to?
From the building?
From the Pastamia building?
Correct.
To?
This is the bump out on all three to the Pastamia building is about 60 feet.
The bump out? No, it's 60 feet is the double drive aisle. It's more like 80, right? Well, you, you know, the old drive aisle, right? Plus parking on either side is 60 and you're 10 feet beyond that both ways, so you're like 80 feet.
The curb, so the existing parking that was on the south side of the drive aisle is now grassed over.
Right.
So from, we're talking about from building to building?
Building to building.
Including the grass area and the drive area and the parking in front of Pastamia.
So you've got two walls happening there. You've got the, the wall that's part of that, that little part of the building that juts out to the north. And then there's the, I don't know what the width of the, the loading area is, and then you have the, the actual Aldi's building. So I'm curious, what is the distance from the wall, the outcropping wall and the main wall of the building?
Kim's going to get a scale.
Do they understand my question? Building face to building face, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what they're looking at.
It's over 90 feet from, from the Pastamia building to that bump out.
To the bump out? And then what is it to the actual wall of your, of the building? To Aldi's proper?
From wall to wall.
So to the main building, like not counting the truck, like the wall on the other side of the truck dock? It's like 120 feet.
To the wall because you're, you're going over the, the loading area.
120.
The loading area is, is-
120 feet.
120 feet, you said.
So it's 120, okay.
Any other questions?
One more. Aldi is generally speaking a standalone building, correct? So there would be no possibility of connecting to the other buildings, like putting a building in between Pasta and Aldi?
No.
And how much space from your western wall to the asphalt?
It's 30 feet.
And Christie?
At the south end, it's 30 feet.
The, the asphalt configuration is not likely going to change much? The configuration is going to stay the same?
From what they're proposing or what's out there now?
What's out there now?
Like she had said, I mean, like where the truck, the drive aisle on the northeast, the one at the angle, that's new. So that parking aisle north of it, that's new. And then the parking spaces north of the loading dock have been removed, but everything to the east of the building is pretty much the same.
Any other questions? At this point, I shall open up the public hearing portion. If anyone in the audience has something to say, there are these witness forms on the back table. Please be sure to fill one of those out and turn it in to Kim and then she will call the names in order.
Rob Larson?
Please come up.
Come up to the mic.
So I guess I'm in no way related to anything to do business-wise with Pastamia. I'm just a resident of the Oakland neighborhood on the south side there. It looks to me like if I were the owner or I was, you know, a business owner in that area, that's going to really affect business there. You guys have done a really good job of building up this whole area. I've been here since 2001 and I've seen it at its lowest and it's actually kind of a booming area now, which is, which is nice to see. I'm just worried about the effect of this overshadowing the business that's there and that's been there for quite some time. So that's just a statement, if you will. It's not a question. It's something to, you know, kind of think about. On the south side of the road there, the Oakland neighborhood, we get cars at this point coming through there pretty quick all the time. There's a lot of young children. I would ask that if this plan does go through, there's some kind of signage or something stating that this is not a through fare, this is not an area that people can avoid the traffic lights, you know, to get through there and get to Aldi. It's, it's, it's actually becoming quite congested at this point and I think it'd be nice to have some kind of signage to, you know, discourage that type of behavior. So just a statement on that as well, so.
I think part of the issue with that Devon Avenue and South Bartlett Road are both county roads, right? So we would have?
I'm assuming he's talking about like Tennyson and Oakland Road, people cutting through from South Bartlett, making a right.
Well, your comments are going to appear in the minutes.
Yeah, this is going to increase.
The board is going to see the comments and that's the body that would deal with that kind of thing.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
They may, for example, be able to approach to Page County and say, no right turn on northbound South Bartlett Road onto East Oakland Drive. Or something like, like from four to six and eight to 10 in the morning or something, or something where rush hour, they're trying to avoid the light.
Leah Barbara?
Hi, I'm also in the Oakland-Tennyson group and maybe like you were mentioning, it's not this body's deal, but I was just curious, I'm concerned also with the increased traffic in the area that this will bring, as excited as, for Aldi as I am. I know crossing Devon is dangerous as, right now, and I was just curious, my thought when I saw the proposal was why the entrance to the shopping center wasn't adjusted or couldn't be adjusted to line up with Tennyson, to allow for a four-way stop or a traffic signal to try to slow down the traffic, the increased traffic flow that's going to come to this area. going to come to this area with the new store.
I, I think part of the problem is there are a lot of utilities that would have to be moved, and that's why the building is placed where it is right now. The original plan 30 years ago or whatever was hoping to have it moved a little bit more to the east.
Hmm, okay.
But it, at this point, it would be probably too cost prohibitive?
Um, I honest, I mean, I would think if it was actually a four-way intersection, it would actually encourage more people to cut through the neighborhood, um, as, as a side note. But that wasn't looked at it. It's not a subdivision. It's just a site plan at this point, so that we're not really looking. They're not adding any curb cuts, and again, that's DuPage County's jurisdiction. So they're the ones that would say, they have very specific things they look at with stop signs, traffic signals, roadways. A lot of things go into that. They have their own metrics that they look at. It's, if there was a stop sign, odds are it's going to be on Tennyson or Oakland. They're not going to be putting a stop sign anywhere along Devon Avenue. It wouldn't meet their traffic requirements.
Well, I can tell you, for example, when, uh, when Gorski's first built and that shopping center was opening up, Devon used to be a stop sign at South Main Street, South Bartlett Road, and it did not go further west. That was out of Winch driveway to his farm. And when they put the light in, that's when they made the dead end portion of South Main Street because it was too close to a signalized intersection. And I would suspect that Tennyson Road would be the same thing, uh, as far as a stop sign, a four-way stop, so close to a signalized intersection. And again, those are both DuPage County.
Felix Lenza?
Thank you for, for hearing me. Uh, one, I just wanted to thank Aldi. I think, I think the village needs it. Uh, but my question was more to, uh, what you stated early in, in, in the presentation and about a few minutes ago about the, the benefits of moving that whole building to the west. You know, was there any benefit to that? Is it, is it purely cost because of utilities? Because I think if it moved a little bit closer east, it would solve a lot of problems with the garbage by Pastamia, the aesthetic on the western wall, and things of that nature. I'm just wondering if that's even a possibility.
Well, there is a curb cut into CVS to complicate, further complicate it, right? And that's theirs. So we have to leave the access for them, and that's if we had the latitude or if the project development team had the latitude to actually do something outside of the parcel that they were given to work with. It's hard to imagine that that would be a practical alternate.
Right. So this, the site that Aldi's on is what the location they negotiated with the property owner. So we're coming in and looking at what was already negotiated between the property owner and Aldi. We just get to review what's submitted. We can't say, "I think this site needs to change."
So I guess my question is for, for Aldi, was there a benefit to move it far west other than... That's all I had. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, so we did look, you know, our initial concept was to have the building on the east side of this parcel, but, um, with the detention being only on the east side of the parking lot, uh, if you put the building there, you wouldn't be able to put, uh, you can't replace that detention outside of that drainage area. Also, um, it would put a lot of, like how on the east side, there are the rows of parking with the islands at the end, so you're, you know, you'd go down and then, and go around to get back down the next aisle. Um, that was, that would be replicated on the west side, and that drive aisle with CVS there and, um, you know, the, the back alley to the north, um, it was too congested for traffic flow.
And I'll add that too. Um, in, in our negotiations with the property owner, um, he also did not want us to be on that side of the building because the way our building would have sat, it would have pretty much blocked about 75% of the business that you'd look at going north, um, and he just wouldn't agree to that. He wanted us to be more what he considers in line with the rest of the shopping center, so that's why it was also moved. That was another reason why it was moved over.
Can I speak?
That's it? Nobody else has anything to say?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, George.
Um, just as a curiosity question, so that we understand, where are the utilities that are causing the problem of being able to have a building more centrally located? Again, like I said, when I sat on the TOD...
Yeah.
We had hoped and talked very, at length about getting this building of the future, whatever it may be, uh, more centrally located in the parking lot. And just because I'd like to know, and others might also, where are the utilities that are causing us this problem?
Right. And it's, it's the, um, the storm sewer and the detention. Right now, there's one run of storm sewer that goes, uh, where the, you know, where I'm showing up, you know, through here, that we're rerouting around the building, and then right here, there's another run of storm sewer. This run that we're maintaining, um, provides the detention, it restricts the detention. So there's a restrictor structure in the manhole down at the south end here, um, on Devon, you know, right before it connects to Devon, to the main, uh, trunk sewer along Devon. So what happens is with this restrictor, this is only a 12-inch pipe that drains this whole, uh, half of the parking lot. And that 12-inch pipe will back up and pond up into the parking lot, all the way up to the north end, about 14 inches. The, the pipe on, that runs on this side, this storm sewer does not have a restrictor at the south end. What happens is this east side will pond up over top to the west, get into that storm sewer, and then any overflow that doesn't get through that restrictor will then go through that other run. What the proposed utility plan, um, does is we take this 12-inch pipe coming south here, and we just reroute it around the building and make that connection down there. This run of storm sewer, we connect in at the north end, and have a 48-inch pipe here, and then another run of 48-inch pipe here. The storm sewer from the east runs over, connects into, um, this 48-inch pipe, and that all connects into this, uh, restrictor structure down here. To eliminate this, uh, you know, to put the building on this side, there's no way to provide that detention that you would be filling. There, you can't move it over to the west side where there is no detention, there is no restrictor. So that was the main, uh, utility reason for not being able to put the building on the east side. It was designed that way? I think we're all confused. It doesn't, it's not a good design. It doesn't make sense, but that's, it is what it is. So...
What you're rerouting, would that also only be 12 inches or bigger?
I don't remember off, well, I've got the... Yes, on, on that west side, we're maintaining the 12-inch pipe.
So when I was going through the previous PUD plans, if you recall, there was, what the grass lot is now was originally intended to be an outlot at some point. When the most recent PUD plan amendment went through, there really wasn't engineering that was required as part of that. So when they moved the location of the building, I'm not sure they were aware of the utility locations when they moved that building pad.
Okay, so it, that line that goes from top to bottom, north to south, huh, just happens to be right in the middle of what would be the middle of where we had dreamed a building could reasonably be built. You sure as heck don't want to build a building over utilities, so, uh, seeing where it's at helps put a perspective on the, the problem.
Right. And Gorski Plaza, well, that's what it was originally called, wasn't all built, built at once. So it was kind of a piecemeal development. So I don't, I think the east side, the east side, I know was developed first with the grocery store, then addition, addition to the north, then where the post office is, then further west, and then down to where Pastamia is now. It's been, it wasn't all planned to look like that from the very beginning. So I'm thinking the engineering happened at different points in time as well.
And as long as I'm speaking, I'd like to add a comment that really is in going with what I had said about the west wall. I think anything that you do on the west wall, assuming that something will be done, something similar might be done on the Pastamia side on that north wall, again, to soften the, the, the look of, of a gangway, an alley.
And that was a comment, um, received on, from the committee of the whole, and Aldi did add, um, you know, originally that, that north wall was...
Kind of solid like the west.
Was solid like the west wall.
Right.
And then Aldi did add in, um, I don't know what, what is that called? Nichiha, to, you know, to break that up and to add some, um, you know, add some different texture to it and different, uh, colors.
I, I think that makes a, a big improvement. That's why I reserved comment at the, uh, beginning because that was my issue, that western wall, uh, given your place of prominence, and, uh, it really had turned me off the whole project, and I didn't want to start out with negative comments. But it, I would, I would like to see something because it would enhance things for you and anyone else going through there, since probably most of the traffic will see that, either coming from the west on Main Street or turning in there. Because the whole shopping center is very beautiful. It was well done in its day, uh, but there was a point when there was so much vacancy, they were talking about bulldozing the shopping center, and Manny came along, and, and what a godsend for that shopping plaza. It's one of our most beautiful pieces of architecture and everything. Because even when it was built in the seventies, the, um, the Palladium, the arches had not come into vogue yet. They were kind of a little ahead of their time. And this has the potential for being, uh, a, a good enhancement. Any other?
Yeah, I just kind of build on that maybe a little bit. I think, other than the west elevation, even though there's an exception for materials, I think it's a great-looking building. Um, I like what was done on the Pastamia side by adding, so it's not a, a, just one big solid wall. Um, I like the berm on that side, and now the evergreens on the berm. That will help break up that somewhat. The downside of fixing or improving the aesthetics of that, um, north wall now leaves the west wall that much more, um, standing out as, as a warehouse wall, if you want to use that term. Putting in the similar materials on that wall would break that up. And then you, you look at that wall with Mark's comment about the upper, I mean, that, that really is, um, much less attractive, much less desirable than the rest of the building. The, the exception in, in the materials, I don't have a problem with it all. I think it looks nice. If possible, I think we need to address the west wall.
I think that's a, a valid point. On, on page 26 in your packet under the number one, it says, "This is, uh, constructing a new grocery store on an outlot along Devon Avenue to help strengthen the southern gateway into the downtown as recommended in the downtown TOD plan." And again, it's visionary. It's, it's the gateway into downtown that, um, there was, there was a good vision when it was built, and there was almo, it was almost lost because of bulldozing the shopping center if they had gone through. And the aesthetic enhancements would go a long way along that western wall.
You know, realizing you're a national entity, you have your national identity, um, you know, I can appreciate that. By the same token, you've expressed this being a, because of the location to your corporate headquarters and having dignitaries looking at it, um, as I think either George or Mike pointed out, it's, it would be good for our community, for our gateway, but it would probably be good for Aldi since this is your greatest and best, um, to present it that way. I don't know how you market the stores because then if that's your prototype greatest, but you, you're in someplace where you don't need to quite do all of that, you know, then you have to deal with that, you know, I understand that. But if, if it's the latest and greatest, that wall, I think, really detracts from that.
Any further comments or motions?
Mike, uh, something that George mentioned about the future store, right? We're, we're looking at, um, a, a great addition to this, uh, community. What about from a utility perspective? Is the electricity a problem if we wanted to eventually, uh, get some electric vehicle charging spots or anything like that? Is there problems, uh, expanding?
No, it won't be a problem. Aldi, um, they don't incorporate electric vehicle charging right now into, um, their construction, but it's in the planning. So everything is designed, um, with the intent that it can be, uh, installed at a later date. So the electric, the electrical will be ready. Um, and one of the documents that we sent over, you know, we designated where those electric vehicle charging stations would go in if it's done in the future. So it, they do plan for that. They just don't install it right now.
Great. Good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Do we do this in one motion?
We have the option of doing it in one or two or breaking things up. Uh, the, it could be done in one motion unless anybody has a specific holdout item not wanting to be covered.
In that case, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to move...
And base it on the findings of fact, too.
Yes. I would like to, uh, move to approve, uh, case number 23-03 Aldi for the modification to the planned unit development special use permit. Fourth site plan PUD amendment, final site PUD for Aldi, including the major design except...
exceptions and the conditions and finding of fact as written in the staff report with the additional condition that the petitioner redesigned the west wall of the building to provide similar architectural interest to the other three facades of the building and to carry the finished material of the tower northwards on the west side of the tower until such time it's not visible from the street.
Okay, at this point, we have a motion on the floor, so I shall close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mark, seconded by George. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Charlie DeVoe?
Yes.
Mark Hopkins?
Yes.
George Cozio?
Yes.
Michelle Sarwas?
Yes.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
John Baderman?
Yes.
Mike Weirden?
Yes. Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the board. Stay in touch with Kim, Kristy. Where's my hand? Sorry. Kristy, to find out when it appears on the village board agenda. I would presume fairly soon. Anything else going on? Anything with old business, new business?
I don't think we'll have anything next month, but I think we'll be meeting just regularly over the summer. So if there's a meeting you can attend this summer, please let me know, I can make sure we have a forum.
Any motions to adjourn?
So moved.